So if you would, please stand for the flip.
I want to give you just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing, Mr. Nick, would you please give us an indication, please? Enough to put you on the spot.
Sure.
You're here.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you so much that we have the freedom to gather and to gather freely and unafraid, that we have the ability to disagree and sometimes argue, that we are able to discuss and have disagreements. And my prayer for tonight and for all of these meetings is that you have your will. That personal agendas will go out the window so that your will can be done and that we accept what that will is. As asked for peace as the meeting proceeds tonight, ask for safety as people travel home tonight, and ask for you to just bless us with a positive time. In Jesus' name, amen.
Any other place we sit? All right, first on the agenda is the presentation of reaccreditation award for the Town and Tasmal Police Department by Mr. Todd Wingamp Hill.
You good?
All right. He's the DCJS program manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for letting me be here this evening. I'm here on behalf of Bob Boosier, Secretary of Public Safety here in Tasmal. I'm here to make a special presentation to your Town and Tasmal Police Department. You know, back in August, we sent a team of assessors to that police department to take a look at every aspect of the police department. They looked at everything from administration, the operations, the personnel, the training. They looked at files, they interviewed people, they did ride-alongs, looked at property and evidence. They basically looked at everything. A hundred and ninety-one standards that they had to prove. Out of that hundred and ninety-one standards, there was over five hundred and seventy individual bullets that they had to prove. And your police department did a fantastic job. They did a ride-along when they were here with Officer Blake Robinson. And the former chief that did the ride-along with Blake was very impressed with his professionalism. They were impressed with what he knew about your town, what he knew about the people, but also what he knew about the policy of the organization, the laws of the Commonwealth, and how he did his job as a professional man. You know, there's a lot of things that they did while they were here. And in the aspects of it all, there's several things that they came out and they commented on. They commented on the professionalism of the organization and their dedication to the community that they're serving. Now, in Virginia, there's about four hundred law enforcement agencies. Only one hundred and one of those agencies are accredited through the LEPSE. And tonight, I'm here to make the presentation to Chief Mills and his staff regarding that. I think he has a group of folks here. Chief, would you come on up?
All right, Chief.
Thank you. For Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. We need a little bit of a speed term.
I need to tell my name.
I do appreciate that Todd, being all the way from Salem down here to present this award. We take this award with a lot of pride. We couldn't do this without the town cooperation from Todd and his crew. And the town council supports us in every way. You know, we had interactions to complete this task with the other town employees, things that happened with road crews and stuff. But we appreciate each and every one of the town employees and citizens who make this a really safe place to live and work. But we want to thank, I really want to thank Sean, Stan, and Ben, who are my command staff, that really put this thing together. And we're hoping we're going to do this again in four years.
Next on the agenda is introduction by Keisha Cole, the new executive director of the Tasmal Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, Keisha.
Hey.
How are you?
I think an exciting evening. But thank you for the opportunity to be here, councilmembers, mayor, manager day. I appreciate it. I just wanted to introduce myself. If you don't know me already, I'm Keisha Cole, the new executive director of the Tasmal County Chamber of Commerce. I worked for the Chamber twenty years ago. There was just a town in Tashimben, so I wanted to reach out to all of the towns, all of the councilmembers, kind of introduce myself, let you know that we of the Chamber are here to support our local businesses. And if you have any questions, give me a call if you know any way we can assist. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
While you some parts.
Okay, perfect. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Woods, who has a few concerns he'd like to bring up.
Jerry Wood, eleven twenty-five pin castle. First thing I'd like to do is maybe apologize to Mrs. Borfield there. I used the term, the old jail, and I did not use it as a derogatory term because it's never been a jail in my lifetime. I should have referred to it as the George House. Didn't plan on saying until I saw the agenda there. Who puts this together? I put all the agendas together. No, agendas together. I'd like to go on record to say I never once said I was a disgruntled citizen. I don't know how off God's green earth that came around. I will show you, no, Mayor, I will screenshot you my conversation with Leigh Anne here about me being on the agenda, and there was no word about being a disgruntled citizen. But you've put some ideas in my head, young man. I'll be back. Thank you.
All right. Next, unfortunately, there's no new business recognition this time, so let's move on to item five, and that's the approval of the council meeting minutes on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Could I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the council meeting minutes on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? All in favor, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is the approval of the financial statements and financial report for December two thousand and twenty-two. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor of approval of financial statements and financial report for December two thousand and twenty-two? All in favor, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Okay, so financial statements, financial report are approved. Next is the committee conference updates, planning commission committee, council member Davis.
We did not meet this past Monday.
Okay, so that's an easy one.
We didn't meet because of the first month, they fell on the second, which was technically a holiday.
Technicalities. Next, unfinished business, miscellaneous, we have nothing. So next is new business. And first is the first reading, and well, I guess first we have to have a vote on the approval of the zoning of, what is it, seven fifty-one pin castle, term by, from R1 to an R2.
Well, that'd be a first reading.
Okay, so.
So be chapter twenty-three zoning R1 in general, section twenty-three dash two point one, Town and Tasmal zoning map. Be ordained by the council of Town and Tasmal, Jenny, which is section six dash two of the Town Charter and twenty-three dash two and twenty-three dash six of the code of the Town and Tasmal that hereby amends the code of the Town and Tasmal to incorporate the recognized Town and Tasmal zoning map in the Town Code and to further enact the following change of Town and Tasmal zoning map and its reclassifications under designation of a certain parcel of real property located in the town as identified below and to reconfigure the Town and Tasmal zoning map accordingly. To be from section twenty-three dash two point one, Town and Tasmal zoning map, tax map parcel numbers O nine four B A double O three and O nine four B A double O fifty-four, reclassified residential limitic R1, zero to two dwelling units per acre, to residential general R2, two to five dwelling units per acre gross. All of the designations as indicated of the Tasmal, Town and Tasmal zoning map remain unchanged other than the changes noted in the proposed amendment.
So I guess Brett's section where I would need a motion to approve the change in zoning?
Oh, Lord. Brett, did you pack the lady that over a month after the public hearing? You used to do.
If you waive the second hearing.
At this point in time, it has to be a waiver of the second reading.
Okay.
First reading, you have to get a motion to waive the second reading.
Okay, so could I get a motion to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
Second.
All, any discussion?
Hold on, there's.
So what I feel, in lieu of all the evidence presented tonight on both sides, and there seems a lot of good, I'm in favor of tableing this for now.
I second that, I mean.
Continue to do our due diligence and gather information before we move forward with this. Does that know there's a motion and a second on?
I second. So with this.
Could we just?
If we don't waive the second reading, then we wait till next month and have the second reading and have time to gather more information, correct?
That is correct. Proceededly, that is correct.
So we would need to rescind?
Well, you've got to, at this point in time, you have a motion and a second, so you've got to, you've got discussions, you know, you take a vote on the motions before the floor.
Okay, so we have a motion to waive the second reading and a second. All in favor for waiving the second reading, stay so by saying aye.
That's not what the motion was. The motion was to table.
It wasn't.
Why are you waiting for the second reading?
Take control of this.
Yes, this is one where. No more outbursts. If you're not signed in, if you're not recognized to talk, please leave your comments. We will discuss with our attorney, who will keep us straight.
You have a motion before the floor to waive the second reading. You had a second, you had a discussion, now you need to take a vote on that.
Right, and that's what I was, that's why.
On the discussion. So one of the accusations that was made multiple times throughout the public hearing is that the town did not give the proper notice in order. Right. So my question would be, did we follow the proper notice in sending out the letters to notify citizens that this discussion was going to occur, did occur for the first hearing? And we publicly trusted it publicly? And we followed the procedures in order to have this hearing tonight?
There are two separate public hearings. One, the classification of uses within R2, which was last month, which was advertised publicly and sent out letters to all R2 owners throughout the town. And also publicly published. And also a notice for what I believe is in regards to what the Town has to be trying. For this meeting, certified mail notices went out to all the zoning owners to the individual properties that were in question tonight. That's required by state code. What Chris followed in as a zoning administrator in terms of that notice was also then followed up with a certified affidavit as to what process he followed in order to make sure that the state code was compliant with. So in terms of following statutes, Virginia code and also the Town Code, Chris followed what he needed to do in order to properly notify everyone who's entitled to notice, and I can vouch for that for him.
The only people that would be given notice for this zoning change would be if they physically adjoined this one property.
Specifically, yes, they would get certified notice to join.
Right.
And that's required in state code.
Right.
You have so many days before, so many days outside of that window. You have a five twenty-one day window. You cannot do it five days before or no more than twenty-one days out. So you're kind of, you're boxed into by what the requirements are. So you don't give people too much notice so that they might forget about the meeting and don't get it too late. That's why those requirements are in place.
This was mailed December twenty-first, and everybody signed for it. And then we all, everyone.
When you say all, Chris, you're referring to those parties who were adjoining properties.
Yes, wrong.
And those are also contiguous across the street as well.
And the seven hundred letters that were mentioned were for the R2.
In R2.
You only notify the R2 district because you're changing the R2 district.
Right.
You're changing the uses for R2, for the R2 district.
I'd like to also add, Mayor, there was a lot of concern about the quality and the sufficiency of the home. We have one of two or three state certified building officials employed by the Town and Tasmal in the county. And he's good. And I can assure you that all guidelines will be followed. And if there's franker systems necessary, they'll lead up. If you had your state license on the land, I'll show you if you follow. I just want to, I know that was a big concern in the morning tonight.
As a point of order, you still have a motion and a second on the floor. Brett?
Yes, so all in favor of waiving the second reading, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay.
Nay.
And we've got, something.
I'm for one to.
Forty-two?
Against.
Okay, so the second reading, what we have to?
Just be scheduled for the next month's meeting.
Okay. So anybody know what date that is? Where else?
I think it's February fourteen. I think it is, it's Valentine's Day.
All right, so since we're going to waive the second reading for tonight, I guess I'd need a motion to schedule the next reading on February fourteenth at what time, Mr. Day?
It'll just be on the Thursday for next month.
Okay.
It's not a special time or anything.
Okay. So could I get a motion to have the second reading on February fourteenth?
So you did that by not having waited.
Yeah.
I have to wait, I have to wait, you know, second reading, I, it all happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. So next on the agenda, the reappointment of Town Manager Todd Day to continue being our Town Manager. All in favor of reappointment of Manager Day, stay so by saying aye.
Do you need a motion?
I guess I do. I didn't ask you. Did I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Manager Day, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, next on the agenda is the reappointment of.
Appreciate.
Reappointment of our clerk, Leigh Anne Reagan. Do I need a motion to reappoint Ms. Reagan as our clerk?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of reappointment of our clerk, Leigh Anne Reagan, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, you still have a job, Ms. Reagan. Next is our reappointment of Fire Chief, Chief John Thomas.
Make the motion.
Give a second. Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Fire Chief John Thomas, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. You still have a job, too.
Thank you.
So next is the reappointment of Town Attorney, Mr. Brad Pyatt.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving or reappointing Town Attorney Brad Pyatt, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, Brad's still forty-two. So the EMS update is going to be tabled until February. Miss Selene is under the weather. So next on the agenda is the OTR event discussion. Manager Day.
Okay, you've got a letter in your package from OTR to make a donation, as we have done in years past, a donation of the value of ten thousand dollars. Those funds, if approved, will be taken out of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. A lot of, we have to do a lot of work to approve it now, but that donation will not be made until after July.
So could I get a motion to support the upcoming OTR event?
A motion to approve the donation on the twenty-three to twenty-four budget.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor of approving the donation request by OTR, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so Todd will let them know.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next is the reappointment of Jim Talbot to the Tasmal County Airport Authority for another three-year term.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Any discussion? Come on, just a little bit.
Give himself a face.
Yeah. He can tune his own horn in the newspaper. All right, so all in favor of reappointing Mr. Talbot to the Airport Authority, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay.
Should we put his picture on the thing? A selfie.
All right, so next on the agenda is the urban archery deer season discussion. Mr. Day?
Okay, there's been, I've had at least one elected official show some concern about the population, the overabundance of whitetail deer in the community. I'm sure that's been impacted by damage to vehicles, but to make a long story short, what we've, what we've done is we've researched every locality in the Commonwealth that has an urban archery. By the way, for those that both hunt urban archery, it's in right now. So it'll stay in through March. I've looked at it, Stan's zoned, looked at it. It used to be ten acres, had to be ten acres, twelve foot off the ground. We reduced it probably seven or eight years ago to five acres. And there's not many five-acre parcels in town. But what we did want to do was put an emphasis on the density of homes in town and our largest zone controlled growth area that is a one-acre lot. But we didn't feel like it was appropriate for Little Susie to look at next door. So our recommendation, after much consideration, is to reduce it to two-acre parcel. And also reduce the twelve-foot distance off the ground to ten foot, which more accommodates most of the localities in the Commonwealth in here. Everything else, we're recommending to leave the same. If this council approves to do so, we will take care of the necessary paperwork and forward action, make every available.
Yeah, well, I could say we'll take care of the paperwork.
So with this change, but it would only be during the urban archery season?
Yeah. So you have to say permitting process tradition from the other end of the state? Yeah.
Okay, so I just need a motion to approve the change to go from five acres down to two acres and twelve feet down to ten feet when it comes to tree fence.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion on the two acres.
Yes.
Has there been any, I mean, you looked at whether or not, say you have two-acre properties, two, one acres, you get permission by each of those landowners, could you, they combine that to be two acres?
As long as it's a two-acre parcel.
And you're not shooting across the street or sidewalk or something like that?
Brett was saying a good intent of the law. So, you know, we don't go out and look for trouble. Matter of fact, we don't have it, we invited, you know, we rely on the game warden to do that, but it's got to be what we're recommending. It was five acres, it's now ten. So the officer, the game warden can look at any situation and make an educated decision on, it's up to them, but for the record, it's two acres. Two acres.
But they have to make contact with landowners.
Landowner has to give the permission.
The landowner has a form they have to sign, and it tells who they allow to hunt there. So those people come in, they get a card once they provide their IDs and stuff, so we know that person there, who it is. And Sean takes care of that in the office there, as all paperwork. We have a lot of people that hunt in town, be surprised.
Well, they need to get better because they're going to hunt for deer. All right, so that was our discussion section, so I need that, all in favor for approving the changes to the current hunting regulations here in town, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right. So next on the agenda is budget work session discussion, Manager Day.
Um, at the time of the year, where we try to schedule budget work sessions and how we're going to expend tax dollars and what we'll do with, what we've done historically is just send out an email with maybe a due call and need comment, so then it's time of year.
So this is just to let us know it's coming?
Absolutely, yeah.
So next on the agenda is our miscellaneous section. So first is, as we have discussed, I hold all the council members to determine who they would like to see as the vice mayor. And at the end of the polling, it was Councilmember Katrin that had received the most, had received the most information of, I'll make him vice mayor. So I just need a motion to make, or for council to agree to make Dr. Katrin the new vice mayor.
I'll make a motion to make Dr. Katrin the new vice mayor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of Dr. Katrin being the next vice mayor, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, welcome, Lynn. Now get ready, it's time to start running. So next is the IDA appointments. We had two names brought to us. Do we have to do them separately?
You can do them.
Okay, so the appointment to the IEDA were Dr. Chris Brown and Dr. Stephen Lutz. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adding Dr. Brown and Dr. Lutz to the IEDAs, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so Todd, you'll let those two individuals in? And next, we have a nomination for the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the name put forward was Mr. Danny Willis, who I think is already left. So I need a motion to approve Danny Willis as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adding Mr. Willis to the Board of Zoning Appeals, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so Todd, you will contact Mr. Willis. And next is the nomination for the Historical Review Board. They put forward was Councilmember Joe Beasley. So I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adding Mr. Beasley to the Historical Review Board, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All opposed, states of mind, say a nay. There you go, Ken.
You're abstaining?
So next is our miscellaneous public comments section.
Those first persons on there have already spoke.
Okay, so they were all for the public hearing?
Yeah.
That's what I expected, so next is our, open for council member comments.
I would like to make a comment. I would like to welcome Councilmember Sean, Councilmember Ike Atkins to their baptism of fire.
It's a pleasure to be here.
I would not have wanted that to be my first council meeting.
We might have just walked down, and we'd be like.
We're like, okay, I'm out.
I signed up for what?
Hello, any other council member?
I'd just like to thank everybody for the opportunity. I look forward to serving on this council, and we're going to do the best we can for the town. Likewise, I consider it a privilege to be able to be here, to be sit at a seat. Dr. Terry Mullins sat here, right? He was one of my teachers who inspired me to get out and pursue something like this. So I look forward to working with each of you. And like Justin said, we're here to make things better, so look forward to it.
I'd like to make a comment as well. I know most of the people that were here for the public hearing have left now, but we do take every decision we make here very seriously. And we, we really do want to hear all the, all the points of word, you know, all the, all the points. Yep, all the discussion, all the discourse. That's what government's about. And I mean, I think a lot of things were brought up today that are worth hearing. And I think, you know, this council, you voted on us to make these hard decisions. And, you know, some of them are very hard. So we do take it very seriously. Thank you for your participation.
Anything else? I encourage any elected official to have any questions for next month. Please be in the.
All right, so my favorite part, could I get a?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of, states of mind, say a aye.
Aye.
All right, states of mind, say a nay.